Welcome to this July 30th, 2020, meeting of the City of Santa Barbara, City Council's Committee Sustainability Council Committee. Yeah, July 30th, okay. Would you call the role, please?
Sure. We have Chair Maria.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Very good. We'll open public comment for items that are not on our official agenda. Mr. Moen, is that how you said you say your name?
Yes, that's correct, Moen.
Is anyone raising their hand to speak in open public comment, please?
Yes, there is a few people. I'll start with the first hand I saw up.
Okay, so these are items not on the agenda to the public, please?
The first person is Katie Davis. And Katie, I'm gonna unmute you now and you will have a minute. It looks like you're self muted, so if you could unmute yourself, please. And we should be able to hear you now.
Does that work? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, Katie Davis, Chair of the Santa Barbara Sierra Club. Nice to see all of you online. I want to comment on one item that's not on the agenda but has come up at past Sustainability Committee meetings, and that's the electrification reach code. Santa Barbara has been a real environmental leader on this in the past. You've had reach codes in the past that have exceeded the state standards, though the state standards have caught up. Santa Barbara had called for doing a reach code in the last Climate Action Plan. You're talking about the next update, but we're, we still need to act on the last one. And also, last year, Santa Barbara specifically planned to implement a building electrification reach code in the Strategic Energy Plan that you passed last year. So it's, it's time to, it's time to do it. Thirty-one cities and counties have passed these so far in California, so there's lots of models, and it's a real win-win. It increases affordability because if we can build without new gas infrastructure, that saves a lot of money. Electric appliances are more efficient. It's a win for health because we're learning more about indoor air pollution from using gas and the, and the links to asthma and actually worsens respiratory disease, which is certainly something we're concerned about now. And it's a win for climate because building greenhouse gas emissions are just a significant portion of our greenhouse gas emissions and something we really need to get our, get action on and get our hands around. We're learning more about methane, too. Methane leakage. Ninety percent of the gas that we use in our area from SoCal Gas is imported from other states. So it's mostly fracked in Texas and New Mexico and goes through these pipelines a thousand miles. So there is leakage. There have been huge releases and Lisa Kenin and elsewhere. And just burning it produces greenhouse gas emissions, too. So just stop building out new gas infrastructure and try to reduce some of that use. So now is a good time. I'm urging the Sustainability Committee to move forward on this. The state might include building electrification in their 2020, their 2022 update to Title 24, which would be great. You might not have to do it if the state does it, but they would need to see demand for it in cities on the Central Coast because most of the cities that have passed it have been in Northern California. So we need to, we need to act on it here. So I recommend asking the C E C to include it, but also moving forward on a reach code in Santa Barbara now. One, in case the state doesn't act. And two, to show the state that we do intend and want climate action here in Santa Barbara. And we can make implementation contingent on whether, on the state standards, but it would be good to move forward at least, you know, by, from the committee in the next few months, kind of while the, while the state is looking at it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, I forgot to mention that we are, we have done some agenda management for today. Item number four, the update on the city's 2021 Climate Action Plan update will, will go first, will be our first item for discussion. So let's continue with public comment items not on the agenda.
Okay, next we have Tim Mahoney. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you now. If you could go ahead and unmute your mic.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Tim Mahoney with SoCal Gas. Good news, last month UCSB was able to save $66,000 annually partnering with SoCal Gas on an energy efficiency program. We saved 350 metric tons of greenhouse gases, and that's equivalent to taking 87,000 miles, pardon me, that's 8,700,000 miles of passenger cars off of the year, off of the road per year. So really good news and a great job at UCSB partnering with the gas company. Also, there's been a whole bunch of new technology regarding renewable natural gas. Renewable natural gas is methane that is created from organic sources like landfills, dumps, sewers, wastewater treatment plants, dairies, agriculture. If this gas isn't captured, if this renewable natural gas isn't captured, it simply goes into the atmosphere, creating more greenhouse gases. As long as humans are gonna populate the earth, as long as there's going to be a human waste stream, methane, organic, will be produced. Gas company is working with others to capture this gas and then put that, scrubbing it, cleaning it, putting it in the pipeline and delivering that to homes and businesses. Now, the good thing about renewable natural gas, and I'll finish up on this one, is that if you take that renewable natural gas and you put it into trash trucks like Marbord, they don't have to use any diesel. So you're saving the planet twice. You're getting rid of diesel and you're saving this renewable natural gas that today, tomorrow, and yesterday is going into the atmosphere from the dumps and the landfills and the sewer plants. So as you move forward on all this stuff, just remember that renewable natural gas, it needs to be captured from all those organic sources. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mahoney. Another speaker?
Yes, we have, leave two more. This next one is Paul, and I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. Poirier. And, oh, let me see, it looks like that person just put their hand down. Okay, so they're back. Can you just unmute? Yes. Just go ahead.
So I'm Paul Poirier. I'm a local architect. I'm the past president of the AIA Santa Barbara, the past Chair of the AIA California Committee on the Environment, the past Chair of the Local Sustainability Project, and the past Chair of the Local CCGBC Central Coast Green Building Council. And I'm here to talk to you today about keeping Santa Barbara, you know, in the context of being a leader in California and the nation on energy use. And I think that the AIA last year in our conference in Las Vegas, just over a year ago, the AIA National Organization had a resolution brought up by the people, many of which were from California, to make climate change a top priority for this professional architectural organization. It actually won overwhelmingly supported by the members that were at this convention to vote for it. So it's now one of the top priorities of the AIA is to address climate change. And AIA California is pushing the envelope on how we're doing that. And, you know, with Title 24, our buildings are becoming more and more energy efficient. We've done a great job at that. But now we're moving towards not just getting to zero net energy, but zero net carbon. And the City of San Luis Obispo, I think, three weeks ago, passed an ordinance where they had realized that natural gas is gonna be part, and propane is gonna be part of our economy for a little while longer. And so they made a higher standard for performance above Title 24 for those projects that use fossil fuels. And if you do all-electric, you just meet the standard Title 24 requirements, thereby further reducing the amount of carbon emissions that would come from a building, both commercial and residential, that use natural gas to heat or cool the space or the water in there. So I think that that is a pretty reasonable way to go. And we'd like to see zero-code things work into the way the city's looking at the future of our city. Our city is small. We're nimble. We have a motivated populace here who really wants to do the right thing and also the mildest climate zone in the nation. So it makes it easy for us to do the right thing because we're in a, in an easy environment. And if we can show them how to do it, a slightly more difficult climate zone can do it, and a slightly more difficult climate zone can do it, and we can like pave the way for those difficult, really, really cold, really, really hot climate zones to get to near zero net energy. So I just wanted to thank you for listening to me and just keep that in mind as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker, Mr. Clerk?
We have Michael Chiakos, and I'll go ahead and unmute you now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, everybody. This is Michael Chiakos. I'm the Director of Energy and Climate Programs at the Community Environmental Council. And I also wanted to talk to you about the building electrification reach code as well as Tesla superchargers at the Amtrak station. And I echo all the comments that Katie Davis from Sierra Club made about the importance of Santa Barbara moving forward with your reach code. I know things have stalled out a little bit, but this is not time to take your foot off of the accelerator for passing a reach code. California is considering the Title 24 updates right now. And this is for the 2022 code cycle, and they're looking at doing, building electrification reach codes for the entire state. This is extremely important because the first thing we need to do to get out of climate change hole is stop building the hole and stop permitting new gas for new construction. And the Rocky Mountain Institute recently came out with a report that said we would add 3 million metric tons of carbon to California if California waits one more code cycle till 2025 rather than passing this in 2022. So how the City of Santa Barbara can help is by passing a local reach code so that the state knows that there's support up and down the coast. Many agencies up in the Bay Area have adopted reach codes. San Jose, Santa Cruz, San Luis Obispo, keep going down the coast, Santa Monica, Carlsbad. What's missing is Santa Barbara County and Ventura County. And it would be very important for Santa Barbara to take this step forward. I agree with the gentleman from SoCal Gas that renewable natural gas is important. We need to capture it and we need to use it. But what he didn't tell you is that there's only enough renewable natural gas for a few percent of California's end usage. So we need to get our buildings off of gas and use that renewable natural gas for large industry and hard-to-reach sectors. I also wanted to mention about the Tesla chargers at Amtrak. I was told that the City of Santa Barbara wouldn't allow Tesla to put in chargers there because they wanted some extra payments. This is really important to get more EV charging. It's the biggest, one of the biggest things in the Climate Action Plan. Beyond Alelia, who's only one person, there's not a lot of people working on chargers, so it'd be great to have Tesla just doing it. You know, these would work for renters or people who can't charge at home so that they could charge up and also for tourists who are coming, who want to come and stay in the funk zone, spend money at our local businesses. Instead, they built more chargers out at Galita. The tourists don't want to go to Costco. They want to spend money in the funk zone. This will really help with economic vitality as well. So please do whatever you can to make sure that staff is moving forward with, negotiating with Tesla to build those superchargers down in the funk zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker, Mr. Clerk?
I think that's everybody.
We'll close public comment for this committee meeting. Well, is it appropriate, Ms. Parento, for you to preview when the reach codes or electrification might be on our agenda?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. You know, I do want to assure the committee that this is high on our priority list. As Ms. Davis mentioned, this is part of our Strategic Energy Plan, and we have already come to the committee with some options. You know what? We're really trying to be sensitive to the large process improvement efforts that are going on at community development. They're already, their workforce is very, or their, sorry, workload is very taxing at the moment. And so adding another big project onto them just felt a little bit insensitive right now. But we are working closely with them to make sure that when they're able to incorporate this into their workload, we can move forward. I, also, it's possible that we could bring this back at our next Sustainability Committee meeting and really land on some options we would like to forward to council just to establish the desire to move forward on our reach code, and then we could do some of the legwork before handing it off to community development.
Okay, so let's not, since it's not on the agenda, we'll end the conversation there and move on. Thank you to item number four, update on the city's 2021 Climate Action Plan. So for the public, we're moving this one up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brendan, if you could advance us to, sorry, slide, keep going, right there, slide 23. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce some of the members of our Climate Action Plan team. We've got Timmy Bolton, an Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. We've got also joining us here shortly Rosie Deistie, who's also a planner in the Community Development Department, and then Bree Winkler, who's an Energy and Climate Specialist in our new Sustainability Department. So I'm gonna hand off the presentation to them, and they're going to give you an update of where we are since we last spoke.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Parento. If we could go to the next slide, please. All right, so as shown on the screen here, we're here today to cover a variety of topics. First, gonna provide a quick recap of our last presentation to the Sustainability Committee and how things have changed in light of current events. Then go into our revised outreach plan, cover the collaboratives that the city has partnered with, run through various target options, and conclude with our recommendation. Next slide, please. So as a quick recap, at our last meeting, we established the need to update the Climate Action Plan to incorporate new information, focus the Climate Action Plan strategies, and improve implementation and accountability. We established a timeline and developed an initial outreach plan with extensive community engagement and frequent touchpoints. You asked us to reach out to the community for direction on setting a target and to specifically engage youth groups. Next slide, please. So as you are all aware, since our last presentation in February, the world has fundamentally changed. And the results of that have been felt by city staff, which has directly impacted our workflows and the timeline for this project. Some staff assignments have changed to address the pandemic and the new remote world in which we live. And as mentioned earlier, the recruitment, or I guess not mentioned earlier at this point, the recruitments for the new Sustainability and Resiliency Department have been put on hold. As you might imagine, the outreach strategy needs to be refocused to address the socially distant time we now live in and all the challenges that come with that, like Zoom fatigue, strained community focus, and increasingly limited bandwidth from our community-based partners. Next slide, please. But it's not all doom and gloom, and there are a number of opportunities created by this refocusing and pausing the work program. We're further expanding the scope to address current events with a greater focus on environmental justice and issues brought up with the Black Lives Matter movement. There's also a real opportunity to leverage this effort to facilitate a community and economic recovery from this pandemic that is environmentally sensible and resilient. And on a related note, to better integrate climate action into the city's strategic vision and plans to ensure a sustainable future for the special place that we all call home. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Winkler to cover the next slides.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Bolton. So as Timmy mentioned, of course, we live in a completely different era now. And something that we really want to pay attention to is climate justice. And so we're gonna discuss this before we get into how our outreach plan has pivoted. So climate change is a social justice issue. Not only does climate change disproportionately impact vulnerable communities, but the city's actions to mitigate climate change will also have a strong impact on them as well. So our goal is to build relationships with and to listen to these historically marginalized groups. And we have a few strategies to do so. So we are exploring forming a climate justice collaborative. And our preference would be to work on this at a regional scale. There are already regional efforts in the area, so working together would potentially prevent overburdening community-based organizations, which tend to be resource limited anyway. But if this is not possible, given our timeline for the, for our Climate Action Plan, then we'll move forward with our own group, which would include our own internal staff as well as representatives from the community. And also, we are planning a climate ambassador program, which will elicit the help of four to five volunteers to act as a direct conduit between the city and their respective communities. Now, these volunteers will join our staff through the climate action process and also through the implementation phase so that we have an ongoing touchstone in these communities. And also, we will have multilingual workshops and materials through the outreach process. And I'll make sure that we are reaching out to our Spanish-speaking population. Next slide, please. So now on to our outreach plan pivot, which, like everything else these days, is gonna be virtual. So to kick it off and give a little bit of background behind the Climate Action Plan update, we're working on a short video, which will be about two minutes long, and it will help the community understand why we're updating the cap and how they can get involved. At the end of the video, we will have a link to a survey, and this survey will gauge the community's climate concerns and also gather climate action strategies, ideas. Also, we want to make sure we have as many opportunities as possible to reach our entire community. So for those that would rather share in a more, a smaller setting, we have something we're calling Climate Chats, where residents can join city staff for either one-on-one interviews or smaller forums, similar to office hours or coffee chats. Additionally, we'll be holding two idea expositions, which will be open to the public, where we can learn from the brain trust that is our community. And then from all the information and insight that we've gathered from the survey, the interviews, the chats, and the idea expos, we'll hold a focused stakeholder workshop, two of them actually, to strategize the city's climate actions. And then finally, last time we spoke, you gave us a direction to reach out to the younger generation. So we came up with an idea to engage their creativity with a writing prompt called Sustainable Stories, where they share with us what a sustainable Santa Barbara would look like in the future. And so we can gain some insight from that and get some involvement from the younger generation. So now I'll hand it over to Alelia, who will share with us about our regional and local climate collaboratives that we're involved with. Thank you.
So next slide, please. Just really quickly, I wanted to bring to the committee's attention the new Santa Barbara County Climate Collaborative, which was recently formed and is being helmed by the county. But the idea behind this collaborative is that we can take a regional approach to a lot of these larger climate issues that affect us all and don't really respect a regional boundary. And so we, this, you know, the city can participate. We can share best practices. We can facilitate discussions amongst communities, North and South County, and really try to share resources. Additionally, by engaging with this collaborative, we gain membership to a larger collaborative called the Central Coast Climate Collaborative that covers Monterey down to Ventura County. And this ties it in into a statewide network of climate collaboratives. And so it really just broadens our, our resource pool as we look to, to do good work in this area. How we're involved? Well, there's a steering committee for the Climate Collaborative, and, and the city has a seat on that committee currently. And then the idea is that the steering committee will sort of guide the direction of the collaborative, and then subcommittees will form to really tackle and get into the weeds on specific areas of concern. And really, the, the big benefit to this is that we can maximize not only our impact, but our capacity. We can share workload in this space and share resources. And as Bree mentioned, brain trust, right? Everybody has a different level of expertise. And so we are, we're confident that we can get more done on a regional scale. Next slide.
All right, and then to further build on that theme of, you know, we're not alone in this, is the city's membership of the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy. Mayor Helene Snyder joined the city back in 2012, when it was then called the Global Compact of Mayors, which some of you might be a little more familiar with. Since then, the compact joined the European Union's Covenant of Mayors to create this new organization, making it the largest global alliance for city climate leadership. The Global Covenant includes 10,000 cities and local governments across six continents and represents more than 800 million people. At its core, the city's participation in this alliance addresses the question of, does the action of little old Santa Barbara make a difference with a global issue? The answer being absolutely, and especially when we're acting in direct coordination with 800 million people. Just to build on that a little further, by 2030, it's estimated that 2.3 billion tons of annual carbon emissions will be reduced by covenant members. To give some context, that's the yearly carbon emissions from the United States, China, France, Mexico, Russia, and Argentina combined. One of the benefits of the city's participation in the Global Covenant is that we're all using the same methods to count emissions and report on progress made. So we are required to follow global best practices and standardized measurements and reporting. The covenant is very focused on transparency and accountability, as I'll go into further on the next slide. Next slide, please. So here, we see the reporting requirements, which include biennial greenhouse gas emission inventories, a risk and vulnerability assessment, establishing targets and goals, developing a Climate Action Plan, Energy Access Plan, and biennial progress reports. Ultimately, these requirements stuck well with this project, and the progress reports and greenhouse gas inventory updates align well with the cap update's greater focus on accountability and tracking implementation. Although I did want to just quickly bring these requirements up, as it does necessitate some additional staff time, as we do have to externally report all of these things. Right now, we do it to the Carbon Disclosure Project or CDP. But overall, I think it's something that aligns fairly well with the city's goals and the intentions of this plan. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Deistie to cover the next slides.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Next slide. So today I want to talk to you about setting a carbon-neutral target or aspirational goal for the City of Santa Barbara. And what that means is achieving net-zero carbon emissions by either balancing your carbon emissions with carbon renewal projects or removal projects, sorry, or eliminating carbon emissions altogether. This comes out of sort of a consortium of many cities, national governments, large companies, et cetera, that have got together in a global action, climate action summit in September and committed to carbon neutrality by mid-century. Next slide. And to dive a little deeper into this, this slide shows on the left cities in the state of California that have made this commitment. In particular, you want to highlight San Luis Obispo, that's made the commitment earlier than anyone else in the state of California. And on the right are other cities in the United States that have also made this carbon neutrality commitment. Next slide. So why are we making this recommendation now? Is that we mentioned to you last time we came to you that setting a target is one of the first steps in moving forward with adopting a Climate Action Plan update. And although your prior recommendation was to seek public input on target setting, as you heard earlier, the public outreach component has pivoted quite a bit, and we think it would be a better use of our time to focus that strategy effort on education and community input on the strategies to help us meet this aspirational goal. Also, there's great reasons to aspire towards carbon neutrality. This is urged by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, and it's said to aspire to carbon neutral is necessary to stabilize our global climate and stave off planetary catastrophe. This would limit the global increase of warming to 1.5 degrees centigrade. It also aligns with an executive order that Governor Brown signed in 2018, where the state of California is aspiring for carbon neutrality by 2045. And then it does show climate action leadership, as we mentioned earlier. The City of Sacramento just put out a document saying how they're going to achieve carbon neutrality. And I thought they put it best by saying bold transformative action is needed to drastically reduce emissions and avoid the worst impacts of accelerating climate change. So that is our recommendation now, is to select this as our aspirational target. And with that, I think we're ending our presentation. Next slide, those shows the recommendation. Next slide after that, I believe. Yes?
Thanks for a great presentation. I'll ask Ms. Harmon or Ms. Sneddon to pop on if they have questions. There's Ms. Sneddon. Go ahead, please. Questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So it's, we have public comment on this, too, so this is just questions at this time?
I assume there's public comment, and so questions are, Mr. Clerk, do, do you see people out there wanting to speak to this item?
I see one person's hand up, or now two people's hand.
Okay.
There are people were at the, in their hands, yes.
So then questions at this point, Ms. Sneddon, please, thank you.
Okay, no questions. I'd be really happy to make comments after public comment. Thank you.
Okay.
No questions from me, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then let's do, go to public comment, because I, I don't have questions. I mean, I, 2035 is my question, or 2045. We don't want San Luis Obispo to outdo us, but, okay. But, but that's not even like a real question. So let's go to public comment. Thank you.
Okay, first we have, it's Paul Poirier again. And...
I just wanted to say you guys had a great, great program heading forward, and I'd like to see us get a little more aggressive on the zero net carbon. I mean, that's when we're planning on doing it, and, and we can't solve it alone as a city. We have to really set the example for other cities. And if we're going to get in front of that and help them to meet the mid-century deadline, we have to be in front of that to be able to show them how it can be done. Thanks.
Great. The speaker?
Yes, next we have Katie Davis. If you could unmute yourself, Katie.
Hi, yes. I'm here. This is Katie Davis again, and I'll be brief since I kind of am going in and out of this webinar a bit. Just, just saying we strongly support setting a carbon-neutral goal. I think that's a great thing for Santa Barbara to do, and really gives you focus for working on the Climate Action Plan. And we have seen, as you know, Santa Barbara set the 100% renewable energy goal, and then lots of other cities did, and then the whole state of California did. So it does, it does help kind of with the whole, with the whole movement. And, and I'm glad to see this recommendation. That's all.
Thanks, Ms. Davis. Anyone else?
Yes, we have Michael Chiakos again.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Michael Chiakos from CEC again. And first of all, thank you so much to staff for the great work of moving forward. The new Outreach Plan Pivot looks excellent. Really happy that you're going out into the community in such a detailed way. I also would like to echo what the other speakers have said, that the city of Santa Barbara should choose a carbon neutrality target that is before the states. You know, right now, the state has this goal of 2045. So really, if Santa Barbara chooses that goal, it means we're doing less than most places in the state, because we're very slow growing compared to other parts of the state. We're also, you know, a wealthier environmental leader community, and we should really be as, as Paul was saying, out there in front, showing what can be done so that other places can follow and learn from the efforts that we're making. We saw some of these other cities that were, had set goals a few years ago, more towards the mid-century, but the science is very clear that we need to act and act quicker, as well as we're seeing the cost of the different technologies for implementing these solutions drop extremely quickly. You, you may have heard the different proposals coming out of the federal government, from congressional Democrats, and from Joe Biden, looking at 100% renewable and clean electricity by 2035. This wasn't even being talked at a federal level, you know, a few years ago. So we really think that it's possible to do. We just need to set that aspirational goal a little earlier. San Luis Obispo sent it for 2035. We think that we, of course, should be able to beat San Luis Obispo. CEC has had our Fossil Free by 33 Initiative and Campaign, where about 15 years ago, we wrote out the plan of how this can be achieved. We really think a goal of 2030, 2033 would be appropriate in this situation. It is an aspirational goal, but it does set all of city staff, you know, working towards this. Hopefully, if public work sees, you know, other companies wanting to put in free chargers and not have to do the work themselves, that, you know, if, if they have this goal, they would say, okay, let's, let's get all the help we can from the private sector as well. So really hope that the city of Santa Barbara can choose an earlier goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with their hand raised?
That is everybody.
Tim Mahoney would like to speak.
Okay, then.
Hey, you know, I was at the meeting of this group on February 11th of this year, and there was a pretty large component in the slideshow about building community support, community ownership in the process, low-income households, business community, nonprofits, environmental groups, public health, property owners, renters, et cetera, all on your PowerPoint. And I understand that, you know, times are tough now with C-19. You guys are going to do a pivot, but, you know, that pivot's almost like an about-face. I don't see, I don't hear mention anymore of property owners and renters and the business community, low-income households that are going to suffer if they don't have inexpensive, reliable energy. Is the community going to take ownership of this process? Or is the pivot going to put us into some regional atmosphere where the locals aren't being heard? So I think you guys may want to check on some of this and get back to your original aspirations of involving the community. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else?
No, nobody else has their hand raised at this time.
Ms. Sneddon, did you have a question for the last speaker? Okay, then we'll close public comment. We'll go to our deliberative comments, and Ms. Sneddon will start us off. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Muriel. I, I appreciate Mr. Mahoney's view. At the last meeting, I was very vocal about thinking that we were ready to move forward, that we've had a lot of public engagement over the years, that, that that's something that has occurred. And I'm very supportive of the Plan Pivot. I think I have confidence that with the education and outreach, and that we'll have the input on that. And it's really been a, a long series of welcoming public input on this topic in, in meetings. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that moving forward. I really appreciate this new emphasis on climate justice and recognizing that, what a huge component that is. Very excited about that component coming to fruition. I apologize for my bird. And then I, I would like to get ahead of San Luis Obispo. I have to say, I feel competitive in that, in that way, and I like Santa Barbara to be a leader. So I would ask staff, I mean, how aggressive can we be? I would, I would like to at least meet San Luis Obispo, but frankly, I'd like to get ahead of them. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this direction and excited. And thank you for continuing to work on this, even though, you know, we don't have the full staffing that we were hoping at this point, and, and that being on hold. And just way to go for keeping to moving this all forward and pressing on. So just deep appreciation. Thank you. And I'd be happy to move staff recommendation, but I think I'd like to first push for it to be a little bit more aggressive.
Let's hear from Ms. Harmon. Are you there?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Very much appreciate this presentation and the comments. I, myself, I think, was sort of on the side of pushing for more engagement back in February, but I really find myself on the same page as council member, excuse me, Mayor Protem Sneddon today. I mean, the pandemic has forced our hand in good ways and bad. And I think it's important that we do make this pivot. It seems very, very thoughtfully put together. I really appreciate that. And, you know, I think I've really come around very much to the, the perspective that these things can't wait, and especially in light of the world in which we find ourselves. I think it's, it's more important today than ever that we dig in and move forward. So I'm very supportive of this plan, would also be supportive of being as aggressive as possible. Obviously, I'd like us to have a realistic goal, and something that's, that's not completely out of the realm of possibility, but I think it's always good to be aspirational. And then when we live up to those aspirations, we can all celebrate. So, so that's where I am very supportive and will be supporting whatever motion Mayor Protem Sneddon puts forward. Thank you.
So Ms. Parento, if we went with this 1.5 Celsius for 2033, would, would that be too, would that be unrealistic?
Madam Mayor, I believe you, the motion would be to do a carbon-neutral goal by 2033. I do think it would be a very heavy lift, and I, and, you know, we would have to be very thoughtful about the economic impact of that. However, the, the team was very supportive of an ambitious goal and a, you know, very aspirational goal, and it will help drive some of the work that we're doing. But I would like to invite, you know, Mr. Bolton or Ms. Dicey, who's our target expert, want to weigh in on that. Please do.
Thank you. Please do. Ms. Dicey, are you ready?
Yeah, yeah, I would echo Ms. Parento's comments that it's, it would be a heavy lift. It's quite aspirational. We do call it an aspirational goal. We're not, let's say, held to anything if we don't meet it. It would be, it would take some thoughtful work and studying how, for example, San Luis Obispo is meeting by 2035. I'd like to see exactly what steps they're taking, see if that's something we can meet or even beat. So I'm not saying it's impossible, but it will be a heavy lift.
Okay, well, I would be happy with 2035. And then to sort of look at it like, you know, San Luis Obispo is a sister city of sorts, a cousin city, and we're, we're in step with them, and competition is good. But, so Ms. Sneddon, what are, what are your thoughts? And I'll go ahead and toss it to you to make a, to make a motion. Can't hear you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would like to recommend that the committee forward to counsel a recommendation to establish an aspirational target of carbon neutrality by 2035 for the 2021 Climate Action Plan Update.
Second.
In a second from Ms. Harmon. Is there any other discussion? We need to take a roll call vote, Mr. Moen, since we're participating from remote.
Okay, do I just ask each of the chair members?
That's it.
Chair Maria?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
And the dog said yes, too. I like it. Okay, that's four votes. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Maybe we'll see this group again when we backtrack in the, to our agenda in the original items. We'll close this item, and we, let me find my agenda. And we will go back to item number one. Ms. Parento, is that right? So introduction of the new Sustainability and Resilience Department?
And Renee Irelly's back with us, and she's going to kick us off.
Rearrange the, okay, great.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and committee members. So we're going to take some time to talk a little bit about the new Sustainability and Resilience Department that council approved as part of the new fiscal 20-year budget. So next slide, Mr. Mahoney, if you could take us to the, the great. So I'm Renee Irelly, the Environmental Services Manager, and along with Alealia Parento, we are the two inaugural division managers for the department. We're delighted to be here and, and part of helping to shape this department's future for the city. It is created based on council leadership and a recognition of how sustainability and resilience is connected to so many key elements in our city. And it's our responsibility to lead and act at a local level. Next slide, please. The next, the initial department structure is, again, composed of these two initial divisions, Environmental Services, which I'm the manager, and an Energy and Climate, which is a newly-formed division. I'm obviously highlighting the importance of all of that work that's taking place in our city right now. Next slide, please. So what does Environmental Services do on behalf of the city? So our division oversees a $31 million operation, which is funded by the Solid Waste Fund. It's 100% funded by garbage and recycling rates. So we're a combination of contracted services that require oversight and programs and services delivered in-house with a staff of 10. We provide a breadth of programs and services for the community, as shown here in this graphic, including Clean SB, which is a suite of community services and neighborhood initiatives that we've expanded over the last three years, our business diversion outreach, zero-waste policy and ordinance development, and community waste reduction initiatives. Next slide, please.
All right, and then Energy and Climate Division. You're fairly familiar with what we're doing, but our big initiatives are Santa Barbara Clean Energy, which is our clean energy, or Community Choice Energy Organization that we're in the process of forming. We actually undertake a large number of energy projects each year, both energy efficiency and renewable, and we'll go into those a little bit in a moment. We're currently developing community programs and informational and educational programs around energy and climate. We manage the city's general fund utilities and help advise on the enterprise fund utilities. We're participating in the climate action planning process with the cross-departmental team that you met just a second ago. And we're working really heavily in the energy and climate resilience space, or how do we best protect our city for the future? Next slide, please. And one thing that Renee and I really wanted to stress, and you saw this slide in Paul Casey's budget introduction to this department, was how much work there is going on throughout the city in sustainability. There really, it's not limited to the Energy and Climate Division or the Environmental Services Division. It's really happening throughout the organization. And so our intent is really to work very closely with these other working groups and make sure that our efforts all sync together and, in fact, enhance each other. And to that effect, we have convened a sustainability staff team, which has met historically, and will continue that effort and make sure that we can bring back to you all of the efforts that are happening throughout the city in the sustainability space. Next slide, please. Next slide. So because this is our first meeting as your representatives to this department, we just wanted to go over what we see as the purpose of this committee and the meetings. And we really think that it's an opportunity for us to get into the weeds on some of our sustainability initiatives and really provide sort of next-level education on each of these issues so that you can be really informed and help, help us communicate them to the community and to the rest of council. It's also an opportunity for you to provide guidance on sustainability and resilience strategies as we move forward on various projects. And then it's an opportunity to discuss local and regional and broader sustainability opportunities and challenges that we're facing. Next slide, please. That being said, we have a long list of things we want to bring forward to you. And so there's a lot of initiatives and programs that Ms. Irelly and I are undertaking currently, but so, so are other folks in the organization. And so we really think that it's important to establish a regular schedule of meetings. So at some point, we would love to hear from you if you have a preference. You know, and these are just suggestions, so monthly or bimonthly or quarterly. And we will try and accommodate that based on your schedules. And as I just mentioned, there's a lot of topics ready for your review. So we'd like to be fairly often with you. Next slide, please. And then we wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to our team. We had put together a whole lot of slides on our team, so you could meet them and put a face to the name, but we moved them to the end of the presentation for time. But Renee is going to introduce her shop.
Thank you. Next slide. So the Environmental Services Division, as I said, we're, we're a fairly established division so far. And we, on the, the right side, you'll see under Service Delivery. These are all of the, the contracts that we oversee. We also audit their performance and ensure that there's adequate revenue for, for the fund to provide these services. This is all done... This is all done through program delivery by the team that you see listed over on the left. In addition, we initiate and run a whole suite of programs on behalf of the city as well, as we mentioned earlier. And the staff is a mix of talented scientists, planners, outreach professionals, and code enforcement. And again, if you have time to look at the end of the presentation, since you have copies of them, there's a little bit of a description showing what each of them are responsible for as part of a service delivery for the community. Next slide.
And as Ms. Iarly mentioned, the Energy and Climate Division is brand-new this fiscal year. But we are undertaking, as I mentioned before, Santa Barbara Clean Energy, which is our large capital and service side. And then on the Energy and Climate Program side, which is our internal program, we do have three full-time positions approved by council but on hold currently due to the COVID situation. Next slide. So we wanted to move on to some major initiatives, just to give you a preview of what's going to be coming back your way shortly. Next slide, please.
So yeah, so obviously, as Ms. Parento mentioned earlier, not only do the two divisions have quite a number of items to bring forward over the year, but across the city, there, there's a lot of work that's being done that needs your input on. But just to give you a highlight from Environmental Services this year, a couple of items that we'll be bringing forward. One is part of our Clean SB program update. As I mentioned earlier, it's a suite of programs dealing with neighborhood cleanliness and light and waste reduction, including litter reduction, illegal dumping, encampment cleanups. And we've continued to expand these programs based on council guidance and also community need. And so we're, and we're looking at new ways to be providing service and engaging the neighborhoods in their own responsibility of their local blocks and such. So we'll be bringing forward several initiatives over that over the next year to get your input on and really continuing to look, as I said, for ways to include and increase public involvement and education. That's going to include developing a web portal, portal where both will be able to receive more information from the public, but also probably, more importantly, is be able to show metrics about how we're doing in meeting these, these goals that we have for the city. Next slide. And another area that I wanted to bring to your attention is food rescue and resilience. This is in addition to our more standard organics collection and diversion programs, which are well-established, and we continue to have additional state requirements attached to those as well. But the food rescue and resilience is a newer item. And it's an element that has been brought into new state legislation over the last couple of years, where we're actually being held accountable to capture up at least 20% of edible food that would otherwise be disposed of or composted and have that redirected to organizations that are helping to feed others in our community. So it's a great, it's a great opportunity. It's a lot of infrastructure and coordination that needs to be identified and logistics to work out over the next 18 months. And we're working in collaboration with other jurisdictions across the county and nonprofit groups, including the Food Bank and the Community Environmental Council, as well to really assess what the infrastructure looks like and what the gaps are, and how can we best support these endeavors to make them successful. So it's a really important project. It's exciting. Food resilience obviously is part of climate resilience. And so we'll be bringing back more information to you later this year about the status of that project. Next slide.
And then just a few highlights from the Energy and Climate Program. First is the Strategic Energy Plan, which, as you know, outlined a whole slew of strategies to meet council's 100% renewable electricity goal. And so I just want to let you know what we're currently working on. One thing is obviously building the team. That was strategy number one. And we've got the positions approved, and we're just waiting to be able to recruit those. Next is Community Choice Energy. We are well underway in our implementation phase, and we're looking to launch in October of 2021. So we'll continue to work on that diligently. And then lastly is municipal projects. This was a big section in the Strategic Energy Plan as well. And so we're developing our renewable assets as quickly as we can. We currently have projects slated at the Granada Garage on the roof and also at Fire Station 6. We completed Fire Stations 4 and 5 this year. And then lastly, we're working through our zero-nut energy roadmap, which you've heard us speak about before, which lays out a long list of energy efficiency and renewable projects that the city should undertake. And so we're meticulously making our way down that list as well. Next slide, please. We did bring to this committee, prior to Councilmember Harmon, however, a municipal green building policy, which the committee reviewed. And this is a green building policy that applies only to municipally-owned and operated buildings. So we do plan on bringing that to council this fall for adoption, and it would, again, only apply to city-owned buildings, so any new construction we undertake. This was a pretty ambitious green building policy, truly leading by example, and requires zero-nut energy construction, meaning that the building would produce as much energy as it uses. We did consciously build in flexibility into the, into the policy in case various projects encountered hurdles or roadblocks. We wanted to be able to work with the project team to make sure we were still successful. Next slide. And then you've heard a lot about this at the beginning of today's meeting, but reach codes are, as I mentioned, high on our priority list, and we do anticipate bringing them back to you sooner rather than later to at least start the process for developing a code. As we mentioned when we presented on this earlier in the year, there are several options to consider, the three main ones being an energy efficiency reach code, an electric preferred reach code, as Mr. Poirier brought up earlier in the presentation, where electric construction meets Title 24, and construction with natural gas just has to be a bit more efficient, or a natural gas infrastructure ban, which we're seeing some jurisdictions throughout the state do. Next slide. And with that, that actually concludes our presentation and gives us a little bit of time for questions or comments.
Thank you so much. Any questions from our committee members, Ms. Sneddon?
Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. No question. I'll wait for comments. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. And I don't see Ms. Harmon popping on. So let's see if there's any public comment. Anybody out there?
I'm checking again right now. We have Paul Poirier again, so I'll go ahead and...
Hey, my hand keeps getting raised somehow, but it's not me. Sorry. No comment.
Okay, so that was the only person with their hand up at this time.
Thank you. We'll close public comment and go to Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations. This is so exciting and so much needed, and the sustainability, and now adding resilience. And you two are a dream team, and I'm just so excited about what is coming forward and what you're bringing forward. And I'll meet as often as you want to meet. I think this is really such a high priority, and congratulations. I just could not be more excited for the new department, and I love the logo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sneddon. We really appreciate that. We're quite enthusiastic about not just being able to work together and to work on this work on behalf of the city and with all of you, but I think we have to give credit to Ms. Parento for the logo.
I will second all those comments, Madam Mayor.
Another logo success by Ms. Parento. I think we're gonna need to be in all the divisions now.
My side hustle.
So we, we heard Ms. Harmon chime in, and I will too echo all the compliments from Mayor Protem Sneddon, and, and that we've been so taken up with the pandemic that we, I haven't forgotten that we have important climate concerns and environmental concerns. And thank you for giving us this opportunity, the council, the city, the public, to work on solutions, not just for our residents, but for the region and the world. I don't think that's too, that's exaggerating to say what we're doing does matter in the bigger picture. So I'm very excited, too, about the, all your plans. And your attached PowerPoint presentation had those nice profiles of everyone. And glad to get to know everyone a little bit better. And we'll look ahead to 2021 with maybe some more resources and hiring. And we will be leaders in this arena, as one of the speakers said. So thanks to everyone, and we will keep going on our agenda. Ms. Parento?
I think that might have been, because we did the switch, I think that's our last item.
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. So we've completed all of our agenda items. Thank you. Thank you to the public for participating this way. In a way, it's, it's keeping us, some people from driving in their cars, so maybe we can look on the bright side of virtual meetings. And, and with that, I thank the staff and everyone, and we will adjourn this meeting officially. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.